I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, I'd ask if you'd call the roll, please.
David Burris.
Here.
Ray Echope.
Here.
Bill Luken.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Allison Ritterbuch.
Present.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. We do have an agenda that we'd like to adopt tonight. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second. Been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. And again, I remind the council that if there's any item on the agenda that anyone does have a conflict of interest, please notify the entire council prior to voting. You have in your packages the minutes from the 16th September council meeting, and I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 16th council meeting?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the 16th of September. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. You have in your packages bills in between for $167,449.88. I'd ask for a motion to approve those bills in between.
Make a motion to approve bills in between for $167,449.88?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For current claims, we do have a correction. There should be minus $300 on page three for the charges tonight's security. Those have been removed for further study. A new total of current claims is $89,903.85. I'd ask for a motion to approve the current claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims for $89,903.85?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Current claims are approved. Also in your packages, we have Wells Fargo credit card charges for $2,472.45. I'd accept a motion to approve those charges.
Make the motion to approve Wells Fargo credit cards for $2,472.45?
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve those credit card charges. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Those are approved. Next item on our agenda are communications from the public. We have Pat Rowe and other members of the Volunteers for Concerned Citizens in the audience tonight. If you would step forward and identify yourself and go ahead and communicate with the council.
I'm Linda Smith.
Can you speak into the mic so we can sure pick it up and everyone take care of it?
I'm Linda Smith. Okay. I'm gonna have to read this because I can't remember that part. Anyway, I would like to inform you of conditions in a store open to the public in Hot Springs. It's a local agency which is Community Action, supposed to supply tools, assistance, and food to those in need in the community of Hot Springs and Fall River County. The store has become a safety hazard, a fire hazard, and a cross-contamination hazard. Some of the examples are, for the safety hazard, boxes, bags, totes of garbage in the aisles. There's stuff piled high in the store that's being saved. Fire exit is blocked and locked, which Darkoey said would be unlocked and open and is not There is no fire alarm or fire extinguisher, and it's a combustible nightmare, which Darkoey agreed with me but said that he could not tell a business how much combustible material a person can have in their business. The cross-contamination hazard is that food items and household goods are in the same area. Unclean combustible material is in the same area as the food. Grocery cart used to assist takeout of goods is pushed up to a large lattice holding page that's loaded with trash to be removed. And this cannot be justified when assisting the people of the city of Hot Springs or the county. And we need your help to ensure the safety of the residents in Fall River County. And that's what we're asking. That.
Thank you. I'm gonna read mine as well. Is this on? Can you hear me okay? Okay. Thank you for allowing us to come and present our concerns for, again, Fall River Community Action tonight. My name is Pat Rowe. My husband, John, we're here from Hot Springs, and we have been members of Fall River Community Action and have served for over five years now. We have served as volunteers for four years and officers of the board for over a year. We are here to voice our many concerns for the way Fall River Community Action is being run. First of all, as I'm reiterating, Linda, it is a fire hazard. There are no extinguishers or alarms. I've called the fire marshal several times to tell them that the front door has been locked. The store manager has been told repeatedly that it needs to be left unlocked during business hours, and this has been a problem for years. It's also a safety if anything should happen, and there's a fire, there's only one exit out of the building, and that's the second entrance into the hallway and then out the building. Community Action is an agency to help low-income elderly people by assisting them with their needs such as food, clothing, and household items, as well as supporting our veterans. These very same people are being refused the necessary services that Community Action provides by one person's decision, by her mistreatment of the very people she's supposed to be helping. Community Action Board is not allowing certain members into their regular monthly meeting, which is an open public meeting for anyone to attend. This decision is not in accordance with Community Action's bylaws. I have requested minutes of meetings, and the secretary and the treasurer has refused to release those to me. We now understand also that Community Action Store is under investigation with the state, and we're not exactly sure what it is. We think it's due to the tax status. We did have a question about, maybe someone could clarify this, we were giving this, conducting the public business meeting, of public meetings, and we were told that we could not use this as an open public meeting, and that's what our meetings are, is open to the public as well as to our members. I do have some information. I have a copy here of our first two pages of what our purposes of Community Action and our membership and how we.
Okay, Pat, really, there's nothing that we can do as a city council concerning the internal workings of your board. That has to be done through the membership of your committee. But the complaints that you made concerning the safety hazards and the public safety, we can, through our development coordinator, do an inspection based on your complaint. I would ask that you would provide City Hall with a list of specifics that you read and looked at tonight. We will refer that to our development coordinator, and Public Safety will look at that, if there's any action that we need to take to ensure those areas of public safety get corrected. But as far as the internal workings and how you conduct your meetings and how the board conducts its business, that's up to the board of your organization, and we cannot unless there's some evidence of illegality that would cause our police to look into it. That's the only area that we could look into.
Okay, we're a little, you know, we just want a clarification of this.
Where'd you get that?
We got it from the city.
One of the lakes that forgave you?
Is that?
I think that was the thing off. Okay, yeah, we use that as our guidance. Whether your board has to or not is gonna be up to your legal counsel. But that's for municipalities. That's provided for.
So is it for any public meeting?
The laws are written for municipalities and counties and.
I would say the state's open meeting statutes apply to government agencies, government committees.
So is that, this is basically for?
Without looking at it. No, I just say that the open meeting statutes for the state of South Dakota apply to government agencies, government entities. And they don't apply to private entities.
So what is it that you would like us to do?
We would like any of your public safety concerns concerning the operation of the building handed to us in writing so that we can have something to go off of for our development coordinator to look into that and get that back to public safety. Is that a bill that's?
So bring that to you then?
Pardon?
Bring that to your office?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else that you want me to add?
You know, if you've got the list tonight, we can accept that tonight. It's gonna be a trip to.
You want my messy paper? I'd be glad to get it.
Sure, okay. We can, we'll take this.
I wrote a letter that I wanted to hand out, but not naming anybody, so I went back through my letter so I could, you know, present it to you. Everything is underlined in yellow, red, and black.
Go ahead, Misty, if you can keep that.
Is there anything else that you need to?
I think that that should do it, and, you know, we'll start the public safety part of it. But again, you have to go through your organization and who governs and how that's governed to address those internal issues of office hours and so on and so forth.
Food has been a separate room, but irregardless, it still has that big huge cage in there that's got unclean things.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I do have a question for you.
Oh, sure.
You had mentioned Fall River Community Action, and there's Hot Springs Community Action. Sounds like two different groups? Are they two different groups?
Fall River Community Action, T is the actual name.
Okay. So then, who's?
So I put CA just for Community Action.
Pardon?
Community Action is CA. I just initial it for me reading it, it was shorter.
Okay. But on our agenda, communications from the public, there's Hot Springs Community Action. I'm trying to decide whether you're speaking about two different groups?
No, no.
So you're.
We are the group. That's how it ended up.
Okay. Thank you.
So your organization is actually Fall River Community Action?
T.
T, okay. Did that clarify, Bob?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Are there any other communications from the public? Hearing none. Move on to proclamations. And it is my privilege to offer a proclamation tonight on behalf of Black Hills Habitat for Humanity. Black Hills Habitat for Humanity has decided to sponsor a home here in Hot Springs at the old Water Tower lot, and we're excited to have them in our area. I would like to go ahead and read this formal proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of Hot Springs, South Dakota. Proclamation, Black Hills Habitat for Humanity. Whereas more than 109,000 individuals lived below the poverty line in South Dakota in 2018, and 3,500 affordable homes are needed in the Rapid City area alone. And whereas Black Hills area Habitat for Humanity has served more than 570 individuals through affordable housing solutions and will continue to address the lack of decent housing around the world while reducing environmental impact by recycling building materials through Habitat Restores. And whereas secure tenure not only facilitates opportunities for health improvement, civic engagement, investment, and wealth accumulation, but also provides a source of dignity and respect and serves as a basis for the pursuit of other rights. And whereas the United Nations General Assembly has declared the first Monday in October as World Habitat Day, a time to unite in a worldwide effort to promote policies to ensure adequate shelter for all. By raising awareness and advocating for universal decent housing, we can change the systems that reinforce poverty housing and make affordable homes a reality for all. Now therefore, I, George Cotty, Mayor of Hot Springs, do hereby designate October 7, 2019, as World Habitat Day and encourage all Hot Springs citizens to work towards the elimination of inadequate housing. This is signed on the third day of October of 2019. Is there anyone here from Habitat for Humanity that is able to accept this proclamation with our gratitude as a community for what you're doing for Hot Springs and our Black Hills area?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And if you've got a few remarks, please share it with us.
Absolutely. So, in case you guys don't know, anyone who pays more than 30% of their income toward housing costs is cost-earned by their home. And the reality is that in the United States, one in six people are paying more than 50% of their income for their home. So that's an amazing statistic, and it's happening right here. We can't address it unless we have support of all communities. So I just wanna say thank you so much to the city council, Mayor George Cotty, for supporting us and for allowing us to continue to address the need for affordable housing, not just in major cities, not just in the world, but right here in South Dakota, right here in Hot Springs. Thank you so much.
Can I hear your name?
Crystal Hammer.
Thank you.
With the case. Thank you.
Crystal, thank you. And again, we cannot tell you how much we appreciate you investing in Hot Springs, and I'm sure that we'll have a crew of volunteers to help in whatever way we can.
Thank you. We're very excited to be here as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Crystal. These are the fun things. Let's move on in our agenda. Let's look at personnel actions. I'd accept a motion to approve personnel actions A through I.
I make a motion to approve personnel action items A through I?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve these personnel actions. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those personnel actions are approved. Moving on, committee reports. Administrative and Finance, Bob and Caitlin.
Admin Finance, Wednesday, 1:00 at City Hall. Mayor was present, Allison, Caitlin, Bill, John, Miss D, and myself. A number of old business items that I'll update you on. We talked about reviewing the city fees and making sure that we're identifying all that the city should be collecting for. Misty has put together quite a large spreadsheet of all those fees. The intent behind that is to make a resolution of all those fees, so that rather than updating a fee in an ordinance, as they change, we can just read a resolution and take care of all that. Plus, it's a lot easier for the citizens when they're on the city's website to take a look and see what a particular fee is for a service that they're looking for. So we'll try to get that in front of you folks for you to vote on and see if you like what's put together and the fees, if you have any questions about them. I'll let Misty know so that we can make sure the final draft is the way that you would like it. We also talked about the wage and study compensation. We've chatted about that before. That's complete. And there were three positions that were identified in that wage study that need to be reworked at as far as the wage. They're not quite where they need to be in a couple cases, so we'll take a look at that and try to address how to take care of those in the future. We talked about the city's website. That did get updated. Misty and Justin and Dr. Miller Center have been working on making sure the links are correct, the colors are much more appealing on the websites. Take a look at that and see how that works for you. If you have any suggestions, recommended changes, then let Misty and Justin know what those are. We had a request from the Maintenance Department for additional full-time employee. Right now, we don't see what the budget is to hire a full-time employee. John has been working with Billy to identify what the needs are, but currently, we don't see where the money is to fund that position. We all went through the budget, and we know where we're at on that. We didn't approve that request. So new business items. The big one that we talked about was the peddlers and solicitors, the transient merchants ordinance. And it's the opinion of the group that that particular ordinance doesn't address the current needs of mobile vendors. It's the ordinance that was in place, a particular vendor applied for their license, but it just really doesn't fit the situation as they exist today with mobile vendors. So it's the recommendation of the committee to come up with a separate mobile ordinance that addresses an occurring situation and how mobile vendors do their business. So we'll be working on that, but until that's complete, the other recommendation, and we at least like to get a verbal acknowledgement from the full council, is that we will waive the fees, any current fee for a mobile vendor who's licensed under the transient ordinance as it exists. Again, it just doesn't apply to them, so we don't think it's fair, they should be charged under that ordinance. So if you folks are at least verbally okay with waiving those fees until we can work out what a mobile ordinance would be, what are your feelings on that?
Don't everybody speak at once, please.
You will have an opportunity to vote on mobile ordinance, obviously, we need to approve it, but it's just addressing current fees and whether we should charge a fee to a vendor under an ordinance that really isn't appropriate for how they're doing business.
I think maybe we can make that as a motion item for our next meeting and then have an official vote on it. But up until that time, it'd probably be a head nod to make sure that we're heading in that direction. Does anyone have any objection to doing that?
I certainly don't have an objection, but just as a bit of information that, you know, was brought forth in the meeting is the mobile food vendors that we're talking about are currently both on rented property, so they're not on public access ways. They're both licensed food vendors through the state of South Dakota, and they are both collecting sales tax for the, you know, for the product they're selling. So it's not like they're being, you know, nothing's being given away, if you will. It's just the monthly fee for the transient vendor that we don't, that many of us don't feel is appropriate. So that's a little bit of explanation I'd like to just offer at this time.
Thank you, bud. We're only looking at two at this moment.
Yes.
So the loss of taking some time to do this is gonna be nothing good. And one of the vendors is going to be shutting down after Halloween. Probably Mayor wants to approach this, this funding, but it doesn't look like it's gonna be hurting us in any way.
We'll go ahead then and waive those fees and officially approve that or disapprove that at the next council meeting with a formal motion. Thanks, Bob.
On your agenda tonight, there's cell phone, Southern News Call, of course, 2020 fees that are recommended by the advisory committee, cultural advisory committee, and admin finance is recommending those changes to the fees. You also have on your agenda a seasonal rate, it's a new rate for commercial sewer customers for an odd city water. This has been recommended through Public Works and is also recommended at Admin Finance. The intent of this is to address seasonal businesses that aren't on city water, but they are on city sewer. It's difficult to judge how much water they're putting in the sewer system if we don't have a water reform. In a particular situation during the, in one situation during the winter, one user is being charged upwards of $800 to $900 a month for a sewer fee, and they aren't putting a significant amount of water into the, into the sewer system. So the change, if it's approved tonight, would be 30% rate for the months that are identified in the ordinance. And that 800, in that particular case, that $800 fee would go down to around $250. So it's fair to the users that if they're not putting in a large volume of water into the sewer system, they shouldn't be charged a summer rate for winter usage, or that's the purpose behind the, the ordinance that's in front of you. Airport fueling system, Misty talks about it in her report to you. The system will no longer be supported after June 30 of 2020. That means there's no software update, there's no parts available afterwards, and there's no technical support. The committee is recommending that we just take it a day at a time, that we're not putting any budget in pursuit to replace the system. Currently, the replacement cost is estimated at $13,000. It wasn't bled into form. We'll hope that it stays running and address the problem, address the problem if it comes up, but at some point it will be replaced. We also had a request from the Maintenance Department to increase their budget by $13,000. We have an aging fleet that's needing more and more repairs, and currently, they spent more than their budget has to keep the fleet up and running so that the city can continue performing services for the community. We had two items from Evans Plunge, a request for an additional full-time employee and a request to renew the end-of-year life partner bonuses for 2020. We tabled both of those items until Chris from Evans Plunge has an opportunity to talk with John and the committee. And we'll take a look at that. Caitlin, Nelson, Bill, Misty, John, did I miss anything?
I covered it.
The next Admin Finance meeting will be in a member's court, 1:00 at City Hall and Public Hall.
Okay, thank you. Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
The meeting was held on Thursday, September 26 at 8:00 AM at the airport. I called in on that meeting, so hopefully the notes that I took are accurate. I had five members present from the committee along with the mayor, Tracy, John, Ed, and then also two guests, Petra and Olivia. There was a fly-in that was sponsored, and at that fly-in, we sold 1,100 gallons of aviation fuel. We had 33 fixed-wing aircraft and one helicopter. All good comments from the participants, and they plan on sponsoring another fly-in next year, and we'll try to live. next year, and we'll try to limit it to 40 aircraft because that's about what we can Next item, all the work on the windows and the blinds has been completed. All the runway and ramp, ceiling and striping has been completed. An item that needs to be reviewed for next year would be the review of hangar rental rates. The group wants to do a regional survey of rates so that we stay competitive there. They also discussed new hangar construction types, and through the discussion, the guidelines were developed back in June 15th by the Airport Advisory Committee and adopted by the council at that time on August 1st. These guidelines have been posted on the city website, on the airport page under city departments, and I was able to find that at Misty, so, without much looking. So at least for me, the website's working. As Bob said, the fueling system is basically up and running, and from what Misty commented today at Admin Finance, we are expecting our first direct deposit from the vendor next Tuesday, hoping. And once that occurs, that should be the complete, the transitioning of the system, and we're just about to have to order a second load of fuel. We were informed by K L J, our engineering firm, that the state aeronautics group will no longer provide funds for revenue-producing projects. And what that means for us is that once we are able to pursue the construction of our T-hangers, that the city's portion will be 10% instead of 5%, and so that'll bump that up to about $90,000 instead of $45,000. And also, the airport improvement project funding was reduced by the state from 5% down to 3.5%, and that'll begin in about 2021. The state made these changes in order to manage their funding so that they, I think they're going to run cash short about 2026 if they didn't make these changes. No decisions by the B L M on the mineral rights. Olivia and Petra were present to discuss the balloon festival and so that they can make plans to improve some of the logistical issues that they ran into this year. You always run into those issues when you have an enormously successful event, and so between the Chamber and the balloon festival folks and the Airport Advisory Committee are starting to work on those issues. In the month of September, we had about 192 air operations. Again, those are defined as both takeoffs and landings, you got to have one of each. And we've had about 1,500 gallons of total fuel sales. Our next meeting is Thursday, October 31st, 8:00 AM at the airport.
Thank you, Bill. Excellent notes. Almost better than when you were, I appreciate it. Custard Fall River Regional Waste Management, history, Ron?
Next meeting is 14th of November, 7:00 PM at the Mueller City Center.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Craig?
October 2nd, called the order at 5:00, Hot Springs Library. The old business, we went into the first wall show, building status, November 2014, ladder and later developments. Will the building, there's his question. Will the building withstand highway construction?
Could we pull your mic to you? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, it's better.
Will the building withstand highway construction? And who's liable? If the building is condemned by the city, what do you do? If there's an accident and somebody gets hurt, or needless to say, somebody gets killed for something falling off or anything? Food truck status was set to the meeting today? Okay, okay. Other pending and outstanding applications reported from Scott. The mural on the market building, new design, nobody was there to talk about it again. At the bodega building, either, I'll see, oh, we talked to Martin Malinky, they'd like to have the front end covered up because it's cutted out and it really looks bad from the street. You can see through the windows and just see it's all bevyed and it don't look very good. So they voted to have the city write a letter, but I called Martin. He's supposed to be calling me back, but he hasn't yet. New business, the sign for jump to disorderly, the sign there now is not to sign, committee approved. And Scott's tried to meet with those guys, they're supposed to be at a meeting, but they didn't show up. Brian Powers asked if more people could be appointed to the committee. And that's it. Our next meeting's Wednesday, November 6th, 5:00 at Library.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison?
Am I working? It doesn't sound like I'm working my microphone.
Can you use mine?
Yeah. Let's see, we're meeting the 10th of October, 2019, at noon at Evans Plunge.
Okay, thank you. Parks Recreation, Beautification and Cultural Development, Dave?
Parks are getting prepared for wintertime, blowing lanes in the sprinkler system. We are looking at some of the different, some of the different playground equipment and stuff like that that needs, not at Butler, but at the other parks, we're taking a look at some of that stuff, trying to put together a possible wish list or repair list for some of the older equipment. And we can do that through the wintertime, just trying to get ready for spring, and hopefully we'll have some new plans coming up. And our next meeting will be the first Wednesday of November, now at 3:00 here at the Mueller.
Thank you, Dave. Planning and Zoning Commission, Allison?
Planning and zoning met Wednesday, September 18th, 2019. I have Don Olstad, Christine Hedbrink, Dwight Wainia, Steve Preheim, James Forbor, Wayne Hagman, as well as Scott, Mayor Cotty, Bob Nelson, and myself were present. We had no comments from the public. New business, first one on new business was Orville Elliott replat correction. Through some brainstorming, the group came up with recommending to Elliott to run a title insurance on it to identify who owns it, and Scott was going to follow up with that. Second action was on recreation vehicle, oh.
John, you were there as well, sorry.
John was there. Because I just have John's doing this, so. John, John wrote a permit to allow RV to be placed in an established mobile home park, and that also was presented at Admin Finance today, and there was a couple corrections, I think, and then it's going to go into effect. John Curtis had asked for a variance to put up a garage on the front of his house, and through looking at the plans of what he was wanting, it did not appear that it would fit for a variance. Old Business, Fall River Ranch Resort, we originally thought that, we hadn't heard anything new, and we got a plan in place that they were considering for a P U D, so that is back on as far as looking at that as a possibility. And the mobile food trucks was discussed and moved to Admin Finance, which is now in place to be, have an ordinance. So our next, oh, I didn't put when our next one is. It's coming on the third Wednesday of this month, whatever that is.
16th.
Thank you. As the M P M, City Hall.
Thank you, Allison. Public Safety, Bill?
Public Safety met on Wednesday, the September 18th at 2:00 PM. President, Mayor Cotty, myself, Bob, Caitlin, Chief Close, Captain Wayman, John, Lori Sherard, and one member of the public. Under Old Business, John has been working on the U S Army Corps of Engineers Flood Response Plan. He's got that draft completed and is waiting for comments from the county emergency manager before submitting that plan. We had thought we were going to try to put together a standardized parade route. After discussion, we decided that that really isn't feasible, so that item has been dropped. Regarding the request to look at the possibly eliminating the fire siren, that item is on hold as we're still gathering information. Pre-disaster mitigation plan review meeting number three was held Friday, September 20th at the county annex, and we are putting together the action plans that relate to the city on that one. Another follow-up item regarding alcohol and intoxication issues at Brookside Park, we will be reviewing the data in the October meeting, and based on that review, we'll possibly progress a recommendation to the Parks Committee and then possibly onto the full council. We're also waiting on, to hear from the Department of Revenue regarding findings on local violations and their response on that. Again, continuing to look at ways to control and manage costs associated with the animal and fowl ordinance. Our next step on that is we've asked the police department to provide a list of their needs associated with the boarding facility that can be included as we go out for bid for that service in 2020. We also had a previous item, a concern over the pedestrian crossing at the Chamber Information Center on North River Street. We'll be working with Public Works to find a way to modify the business side of that cross-block entrance to improve pedestrian visibility to motorists. Under New Business, we'd received some concerns from the public over the stop signs that were placed at Jennings Avenue at Fourth Street. Members of the committee and the police department took several looks at the intersection and the initial reasoning for placing the signs and the guidance provided by the Department of Transportation Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. After this reevaluation, we believe the placement of the stop signs are proper and they will remain in place. However, we do want to thank the members of the community that contacted me for, to discuss this matter. During the August public safety meetings, requests had been made to install stop signs on North 22nd Street at Jennings Avenue and at Almond Street at Summit Road. The basis for the 22nd Street signs is the number of children in the neighborhood and the close proximity to the school. Basis for the Almond Street sign is the poor visibility of that intersection. Based on our findings and comparing to the guidance of the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the committee recommends placement of the stop signs at these locations, and resolutions for placement of these signs are on the agenda for this meeting. Councilman Nelson had a question for the police regarding how they would handle someone who was concerned that they may be being pulled over by someone that is not a police officer, and I'd like to ask Captain Wayman to come forward and give us some insight on that.
One of the concerns that was brought up that Councilmember Nelson had heard was with the subdued graphics. If someone doesn't feel comfortable, they pull over and say they're not 100% positive that we are in fact law enforcement, which unfortunately does happen in this world. Happens with fully marked cars, subdued cars. The sort of the standard that's out there right now is if someone doesn't feel comfortable stopping, they go to a lighted, well-populated area. One of the gas stations at night, there's Yes Way, Maverick Junction. The other thing we had asked people to do is if they don't, if they feel they're being pulled over and it's not law enforcement, call 911. 911 can verify if that is in fact a police car behind them. If it's not a police car, they're going to get one pretty quick, and if it is, dispatch can verify that they are in fact safe and they're pulled over. We have put out an memo to the officers so they understand that if someone's not stopping, please make sure that, you know, you're giving people due credit. In today's world, there's a number of reasons people don't stop, but make sure we're listening to find out why it was. And if they call 911, they're going to be in absolutely no trouble. So that's what I came up on that.
Okay, thanks, Cap. Any questions or comments for you?
Just a comment, condolences, Captain Wayman, on the cop lease this week.
This may exist as a hostile or abusive.
Hold up one second. I apologize to you. No, I don't care what you're saying. I appreciate you taking the time to, you know, explain that in a public forum like this, because as we talked about, I just wanted to make sure that if someone isn't comfortable in stopping, you know, that they're not being initially perceived as running for law enforcement, but there's a legitimate concern about who is stopping. So I appreciate you taking the time to share that with the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the officer. What happens if you don't carry your cell phone all the time? I've never carried a cell phone.
In that case, go to a lighted area where that's populated. Like I said, we have a couple, or Yes Way is open 24 hours a day, Maverick Junction, worst case, or if you happen to be going that way, stop out there when there's people.
A busy, lighted place.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, too.
Thanks, Captain Wayne. Appreciate it.
Okay, we also had a member of the public present to follow up on a concern observed in their neighborhood. Chief Close provided the requested input and feedback to the individual, and I believe that requested action has been fulfilled. Chief Close also provided a summary of police department activities, and some of the items of interest is the officers, the reserve officers served the barbecue lunch provided by the vault and supported by other local vendors such as Lynn's Dakota Marta at the school. They got to spend three to four hours with the students, and I think that was just a really good event, and I think was really well-received by the students and the faculty. And the input I've, feedback I've heard from the officers that they had a really good time. We've also, the police department has applied for a 100% grant that would place automatic external defibrillators, or AEDs, in each of the patrol cars. And this is going to be real important if we get this, because so many times, our officers are the first responders on the scene of an awful times, it may be a cardiac arrest. So these AEDs will be a great asset if we can get those. We're also, provided the schools with information, or the police department provided the schools with information on the health risks associated with vaping. Captain Wayman and I also met with the school board, safety, or security, safety, security and advisory committee on their Alice program, dealing with what to do in the event of an active shooter situation. And they are also working morning parking issues at the school, and those seem to be resolved. Meeting ended about 3:00 PM. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, October 16th, at 2:00 PM at City Hall.
Thank you, Bill. Public Works, Bob and Ray?
Public Works met on October 1st at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Ray, Craig, Tracy, Scott, and myself were present. Two new business items that we discussed. A concern was raised about the signs of bushes at the intersection of Fifth Street and Highway 385, obstructing the view of drivers to the north of the intersection. Scott will look into, look into who owns the property and possible remedies. A manhole behind Dollar General needed repair, and that has been taken care of by the sewer department. Some old business items. We've talked about Beaver Street access to a private property there. Property owner asked the committee what decision had been made regarding access to the property. They were told the city doesn't intend to develop Beaver Streets. Again, we talked last week, or last meeting, that Again, we talked last week, or last meeting, that it is a flat street, but it was never developed by the city, and we're not recommending developing that street. John has walked the property. He and I were up there initially after the concern was raised a while back. John believes there may be a way to use their existing property to provide the access they need. The property owner is going to talk with John about his idea and see if that might be workable. The improvements of the wastewater treatment plant, that's a legitimate item for you, for us tonight. Tracy is still waiting for Dean Kurtz Construction to give them a starting date for the repairs.
And Bob, that just came in this afternoon.
Starting this afternoon?
Yeah. We'll be starting doing the removal next Monday, and the removal of the lid, and then once that gets removed later in the week, they'll be down.
Great. If you folks have a chance to get down there before the repairs are done, so you can get a before and after comparison, stop in. The orders down there are overwhelming, and it'll be better until we get that taken care, so employees don't have to work in that anymore. Intersection at 17th and Lincoln has been repaired. The city hall roof drain has been completed. A while back, property owner up on 25th Street addressed the council asking for gravel access to their property that had been disturbed during the rocks off there. That has been taken care of, that one's completed. We've been talking a lot about code reinforcements, both in Public Works and Public Safety, and both committees recognize that we need to do a little better job of enforcing our own codes. If we can start coding at a time or a notice at a time, that's a good thing to do. Scott asked for a better description of the necessary steps to correct code violations regarding non-compliant properties by city ordinance before the city can evade a problem. The property owners must be notified of a code violation or violations by certified bail. Upon failure to comply with the notice of violation, any property legally noticed shall be brought into compliance within, brought into compliance with the notice within 20 days of the date of notice. Upon failure to comply with the notice of violation, any duly authorized employee of the city shall be authorized to enter upon the property, violation, and remove or destroy the offending matter. The costs of such a payment or removal shall be charged to the property owner. If the bill is not satisfied within 30 days of the date of the billing, payment won't be sought either through a collection agency or by placing a lien on the subject property. So, for the public's notice, we're going to try to do a better job of holding property owners to ordinances, and we're asking your assistance to help us take care of that. Ray?
I agree.
Anything to add? Anything to add? The next Public Works meeting will be October 15th, next week, 3:00 at the sale. Public Works.
Thank you, Bob. Southern Hills Economic Development, Caitlin.
Our meeting on September 27th was canceled due to weather, and as of the moment, we have not scheduled the next meeting, I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Our Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, you'll see in your packages tonight, the fees resolution package, the golf committee did review those, and they were refined by the superintendent. Just a couple of things, we wanted to keep the rates competitive with other golf courses in the hills, so the daily rates did not raise. However, membership rates, storage fees, and so forth, did, we raised those, recommend those be raised slightly. The greens have been aerated, along with the rest of the course, that has been completed, and Jason is looking at investing in a snow blower this winter. It's not just because of the snowstorm coming up later in the week and the request of the mayor to keep the golf course open, but we did have some damage to a couple of greens last year as a result of the late snowstorms and ice buildup, and it's far less expensive to keep those greens cleared with a snow blower than it is to replace the grass if they all, they have problems getting that to grow during the summer. With that, move on to the volunteer fire department. Ron?
Next meeting will be October 8th, 7:00 P.M. at the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay, next item on the agenda is our ordinance. We have the first reading of ordinance 1203. That's the City of Hot Springs Code of Ordinances Adopting Ordinance. And that is the blue book that contains all of our ordinances in a much more easily readable fashion, and have been looked at and both reviewed by our attorney and several members of the council. I know Misty's had an opportunity to go through it line by line also, so we'd ask for a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1203.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1203, City of Hot Springs Code of Ordinances Adopting Ordinance.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that first reading. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
It is much more user-friendly.
Okay, great.
Sure. Sam looks great.
And Bob, this would fall under admin finance. Is there a recommendation from the committee for approval?
Yes, we wholeheartedly recommend approving.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you can call the role, please.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Eppity.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritterbush.
Yes.
Greg Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that first reading is approved. We have before you several resolutions, the first one being Resolution 2019-25, and that was a resolution to place a stop sign on Allman at the intersection of Allman and Summit Road. I'd ask for a motion to approve that resolution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-25, a resolution to place a stop sign along Allman Street at the intersection of Allman Street and Summit Road.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to place that stop sign. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think as a safety thing, with the brush and the trees there, I mean, you have to, even with the stop sign, you have to pull out into traffic to see if anybody's coming down the hill. I think as a safety thing, we need to get whoever owns that property, trim bushes back a little bit so there isn't a problem.
Okay, we'll take note of that.
Are you saying in addition to the stop sign, also make sure that they are cut back or something different?
Well, I think that would be, just for safety alone.
Again.
Did anything else drive up there and look at that?
Well, when I went up and looked at it, the, yeah, there, the actual corner where the stop sign would go could use some trimming, but even the left, as you're looking to the left up Summit Street, there is a lot of vegetation there, which is probably not realistic. I mean, you can cut somebody's bushes back a lot, so it seemed reasonable, and the input we got when we got the request, there was some thought that there may have been a stop sign there at one point anyway, so, like I say, obviously, I think a stop sign ought to be there.
Well, I agree with the stop sign.
I don't disagree with there may be a need for some trimming, but...
But that would be a situation, it's all, there is different places in town that vegetation is not being groomed, and for, lack of a better way of putting it, just poor visibility for a driver or a pedestrian. It would be, it would be to our interest to start taking a better look at some of those. In this case, I do see where the stop sign needs to be there, but there is also other factors in that, in that safety area right there in the hill, and we do have ordinances as far as that goes already in place.
Yeah, we will go ahead and take a look at it, but the motion on the table is to approve or deny that stop sign. Are there any further discussions on the stop sign? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and again, I appreciate the comments on the vegetation. We'll take a look to see if we can create a safer environment. Also before you is Resolution 2019-26, and this is the stop signs along North 22nd Street near the school. I'd accept a motion to place those stop signs.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-26, a resolution to place stop signs along North 22nd Street at the intersection of 22nd Street and Jennings Avenue.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to place these stop signs. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, and again, Bill, I assume that the Public Safety Committee recommends approval?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have before you Resolution 2019-27, that's the golf course rates that we are setting for 2020. We have those in your packages. I'd accept a motion to approve that resolution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-27, a resolution to set the 2020 rates and policies at the Southern Hills Golf Course.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2019-27. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You also have a list of additional city property that's to be surplus, and that'd be handled under Resolution 2019-28. I'd accept a motion to approve that resolution.
Make a motion to surplus city property, four items, when I read that.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2019-28, which is a resolution to surplus city property, four items. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That resolution is approved. Final resolution we have is 2019-29, and that's a resolution to establish a seasonal sewer charge for campgrounds not on city water. I'd accept a motion to approve that resolution.
Make a motion for Resolution 2019-29, a resolution established to seasonal sewer charge rate for campground spot on city water.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve this Resolution 2019-29. I had a recommendation from admin finance, Bob, is for...
Both admin finance and Public Works recommend the resolution.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Moving on to new business, we have a possible motion and discussion to approve this memorandum of agreement that's in your packages. This is between Custer and Fall River County for the purchase of the Zerker software. This is for the police department and authorize our chief to sign on behalf of the city to purchase the software for use. And I think this had been briefed before, that this software will allow us to communicate more efficiently, help our officers write their reports, and more efficient communication between actually all the West River Police Forces. I'd accept a motion to approve that memorandum of agreement.
Public, a motion to agreement to share public safety software resources.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the memorandum of agreement with Custer and Fall River County for the purchase of the Zerker software for police department use, and authorize our police chief, Mike Close, to sign on behalf of our city. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? And Bill, is there a recommendation for Public Safety on this?
Recommendation is yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a final item of new business, is a motion and discussion to authorize, need to sign the agreement for the emergency wet well repairs for the wastewater treatment facility by Dean Kurtz Construction Company, and that contract is $445,800. We do have a declaration of emergency that has been looked at by our city attorney, submitted by our city engineer, so it is an emergency repair. I'd accept a motion to authorize that, signing that agreement.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for the emergency wet well repairs at the wastewater treatment facility by Dean Kurtz Construction Company for $145,800.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that agreement and signing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Public Works Committee, what would be the recommendation from Public Works?
Public Works recommends entering into a contract with Dean Kurtz.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our business is Finance Officer Report. Misty?
Thank you. I wanted to discuss first just a couple misstatements in the newspaper. I think an additional correction will be made. If you read the article related to the last council meeting and the second reading of our appropriation ordinance for 2020, there were some misstatements about the financials, and then the correction, if anyone read that, is even a little more confusing. Just to be clear, the city did not over-budget by $5 million. Our revenues do match our expenses. It does include cash applied, not in tune of $5 million, it's half a million about that we chose to apply for cash, so there'll be another correction. We figured it was important to get our finances right in the newspaper, so if anybody has any questions about that, feel free to come in. The ordinance was published in the same newspaper that had the correct numbers, just the article that was written was confusing. So, on to my Finance Officer Report. You did receive monthly financials through September 30th and year-to-date. General fund revenues are under, or are, yep, are under expenditures by $18,000. Liquor, lodging, and dining over by $17,500. Our additional sales tax fund has revenues exceeding expenditures by $351,000, and that's a big part because we're saving for that bridge, the Jennings Bridge project, which looks now like it won't even start until next year. The Business Improvement District, our bid fund, their revenues are under their expenditures by $1,700 year-to-date. Our capital improvement funds, revenues exceed expenditures by $2,000. The water fund, which has had some significant infrastructure improvement projects and new projects this year, has revenues under expenditures by $39,000. The wastewater fund, which you just approved, a pretty big contract for, has revenues exceeding expenditures by $191,000, but we do have a pretty large project, the emergency wet well repairs coming up in our fund. Our solid waste fund, revenues are under expenditures by $44,000. Golf course, the revenues exceed expenditures by $24,000. For this time of year, that's exceptional for our golf course to still be in the black. And also Evans Plunge, their revenues exceed expenditures by $118,000. And, uh, also Evans Plunge, their revenues exceed expenditures by $118,000, and again, one of the best years, um, this time of year for those numbers if you're comparing year over year. Uh, one of the items that has been a concern is our liquor lodging and dining, or our 211 fund, they call it the gross receipts tax, that's down overall. That affects a number of businesses in our community, as those represent sales tax paid, um, for lodging accommodations, eating establishment, alcoholic beverage ticket sales, or admissions to places of amusement, athletic and cultural events. Um, the city, the chamber, and the big groups are all aware of that decline and trying to troubleshoot and find ways to turn that around, and we know we're not alone statewide. Um, tourism has taken a little bit of a hit this year. I did address some changes, we made two CDs, so when you get to the report related to, um, the investments and the CD listing, we took a maturing CD at First Interstate for our wastewater fund, took the interest off of it and rolled it over. That CD serves as debt service for an SRF loan, uh, we rolled it into an 11-month CD at 1.4% after comparing the rates of all of our approved, uh, banks. We do have, um, the three large CDs that we set aside for our 2021 road reconstruction and the infrastructure improvements for water and wastewater at that same time. Those CDs are coming due in November, uh, we'll be getting some comparison numbers and talking about those at the next Admin Finance meeting and addressing those, um, with our timeline for when those funds will be needed. We already talked a lot about the, uh, airport fueling systems, so I'll read through that update. Also, our city ordinance codification project, happy to have that first reading through, thank you for all the work that the council and, um, the communities helped as we went through, uh, looking at all those ordinances and trying to codify them in a user-friendly format. We already have some updates to make to it, so once we get past, we'll be, um, adding the, uh, airport zoning, um, to the, uh, zoning requirements, and then, um, any other changes that we make to fees. We'll have to, the fee, the citywide fee worksheet kind of rolls into that in that resolution, um, will need to be passed at the same time or close to the same time since one of the parts of the project was removing references to fees in most of our ordinances. So, um, once we get this passed and updated on our website, we'll have a number of other website reviews to get done. Many of our links and references, reference chapters, uh, codes that are now going to be changing, but I, I do believe it's worth it, so stick with us. Um, after we pass the second reading, we'll start working on those other, uh, things that need to follow. Uh, we talked a little bit about the citywide fee worksheet, I will send that out to the full council for review, long before it comes in front of you to pass at a meeting, but at this point, John, um, is just doing a review of it, we're going to be making those updates before we send it out to you. It's not final when I send it to you, so if you have any feedback or any questions, please offer it right up, uh, we'd like to have that addressed before we pass it. Talked about the website, we didn't talk about the auction, uh, the date has changed. The city-county-school combined surplus auction has been delayed in order to meet the required publication requirements. Um, notices have been published in our official newspaper, and the new opening date for bidding is October 11th. The auction will close on the 15th. As a reminder, we intend to offer for auction all of the items that have been approved surplus by action of the council. That number four represented the fourth resolution for surplus items that we've done. John and I will be gone, um, October 8th through the 11th in Aberdeen to attend the 86 Annual SDML Conference. Uh, we're really excited to be present this year for that conference and be able to accept in person the Gold Safety Award from the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and the SDML Workers Compensation Fund that the city has been awarded. I thank you for allowing us the opportunity to attend and I look forward to that. Um, I just gave you an update on the annual unclaimed property reporting and the work we've done to get in compliance with those laws. Uh, we only had, uh, four checks in the last three years that we've had to remit by staying on top of those and contacting people, uh, when they haven't cashed your checks in nine, or 180 days, so we've, we've, uh, made it strides in our compliance with those unclaimed property laws. And that's all I have for my update, thank you.
Thanks, Misty. A lot of things going on, really appreciate all your work. John, uh, city administrative report.
Thank you all, council, for the opportunity to attend the South Dakota National League Conference in Aberdeen this week, looking forward to that. Uh, since our last meeting, I've had an opportunity to learn a great deal about the food truck industry, I've got a lot of info from the planning community and members of council, and a lot of reading and a lot of research about what other states and what other cities in our state are doing. Learned today, really, and the transient word and permanent word don't really fit with the food truck industry, what they can move and not really what you call transient. Uh, I believe the category of a food truck or a local food vendor is, is much more appropriate. And I'm glad that these dining varieties are available to us, and I'm glad that they're here, and I'm looking forward to getting this put together for them, that, that works for the community. Also attended the 130th anniversary of the State Vetman's Home, that was, that was very exciting and educational. I'll remind everybody that Evans Plunge 130th Anniversary is coming up next year, I've been planning for that, it should be an exciting event, seeing people dressed in the old swimwear, I think that should be neat. Uh, Evans Plunge also has the Plunge Into Reading Program, and it's fifth year now, running from October 1st through April 30th, and it's for the K through 5th grade kids, and it has a achievement awards for the kids to get a free Evans Plunge children's dance. Um, not to spoil the mayor's surprise, but we, we've had some activity with the South Dakota Department of Transportation, giving us some funding options, hopefully being considered for our suspended sidewalk concept, and as for the safety purposes, is the main, the main reason I think we got their attention. But I got to review some preliminary design details for the South Dakota Highway 18385 construction, including utilities that'll be going downtown, and the overall planning for suspended sidewalk between the Jennings and Menetata Bridge. Um, it will all fit together, I believe, nicely, and, and the safety concerns that have been expressed over time, I think will be addressed well with this. Um, the ISG people who came up with the concept for us, uh, came and visited and presented the overall picture for me, as I hadn't really seen the overall picture on more of a look at things, and planned view, uh, looking at the overall concept of what, what they have in mind for downtown Hot Springs, it's going to make it a great tourism and family-friendly atmosphere for our historic downtown that will honor our VA heritage. It's very exciting to see these things slowly come together, and I know the American Council worked very hard to make this happen, and I'm excited to see this moving in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And just to, uh, continue to piggyback on what, uh, John said, uh, we did get some exciting news from South Dakota DOT that, uh, they're no longer calling our suspended sidewalk an enhancement, uh, and have offered to, uh, give us, uh, or give, uh, the project $2.8 million to fund it. However, there are some very, uh, big strings attached that we are looking into. First of all, uh, they want us to take, uh, over the maintenance of University Avenue. Uh, secondly, that we would be responsible for the design of the road, the sidewalk, and then, uh, that's from Jennings to Menetata, and then, uh, be responsible for managing the construction. So we're in the process of gathering facts to, uh, find out, uh, what the, the consequences of those would be. Uh, I've had the opportunity to meet with the regional engineer, I've, uh, written a letter to South Dakota DOT, uh, to, uh, get, uh, documentation of, uh, condition of the bridges, any projects that are scheduled, uh, for maintenance, life cycle costs and so forth, if we were to take over University, so that we'll, we will have the facts to present to you, the council, as we make that, that final decision. I'm a little bit concerned that we, a city with only 45 full-time employees are being asked to manage a construction for a major US highway through our town. Uh, we would have to contract all of that out, um, just my preliminary, uh, back of the envelope calculations indicate that that would, uh, be anywhere from $800,000 to a million dollars additional, and so, uh, really asking that the state would, uh, look at that and, uh, consider, uh, consolidating that construction under one major contractor that would have oversight, and that in itself would save, uh, by ISG's estimates, uh, well over a quarter of a million dollars. So we, we've got a lot of discussion that, uh, needs to take place and, uh, but it is encouraging that, uh, South Dakota DOT is, uh, considering, uh, we, helping, uh, helping us resolve a substantial safety issue. Got some good news today from our development coordinator, uh, our construction, residential construction is up 23% over last year, and if you remember, last year it doubled over 2017. Our commercial, uh, construction is up 6% over last year, uh, so we've got about $500,000 or half a million dollars more, uh, construction going on this year than we did last year. Uh, just for example, uh, January through September, building permits, about $2.582 million dollars worth of, uh, housing and, uh, almost a million dollars worth of commercials, so, uh, that's, uh, exciting and showing that Hot Springs is, uh, is growing. I also want to thank our maintenance, uh, group and the people that helped, uh, with Free Dump Week last week, uh, I know they're always busy during those times and, uh, really appreciate their assistance and service to the community. One thing I do want to address publicly tonight, uh, I've heard from several different sources, and it's been publicly mentioned in other meetings, that there's been some concern on the Canton Avenue lot lots by hauled homes, uh, and, and they've expressed it, I've heard other contractors in town express it, uh, nothing has come, uh, to us however specifically. One of the things that we of the city have done has been providing the water and sewer, uh, we're in the process of laying that sewer line now, in RRFP, we said that would be done, uh, in September, late September, uh, however, that has not, to any of our knowledge, delayed hauled homes, they have not contacted us, they have not broken ground. We do have another contractor that does have, uh, uh, two structures, two duplexes that have gone up, and, uh, one of them's been framed, the foundations have been poured, driveways, sidewalks, and so forth are, are in. Uh, so, uh, we, we just want to clarify that we are, we, we are working with hauled homes to try to, uh, ensure that, uh, that this, this project gets done, it's very, very important for Hot Springs, but we also need some information from them concerning the elevation, site layout, accurate site layouts and so forth. So, we'll be working with them, and again, I want to stress how important that is for our community to have these workforce houses provided. Uh, get feedback from the recent visit of the Secretary of the VA to the, uh, VA Center at Fort Meade, and one of the comments, uh, that was made was, Hot Springs doesn't have adequate housing, uh, for VA employees. So it's very important that we address this issue aggressively, and I want to thank the council for your support and pre-planning as many as three years ago to, uh, develop a, a housing plan to stimulate the growth of workforce housing in our community. But it's important that we continue to do that and resolve that issue, and it helps, uh, our Save the VA Committee save, help, uh, make a case to save Hot Springs a valuable, uh, part of our community, because really a part of our DNA is to provide that, that health and healing, and housing is a vital, important part. Also, the paving of Boulder Falls has, uh, directly helped. Uh, we, I know of two instances for sure, a dentist and a doctor that moved into new homes, uh, at Boulder Falls, so I think we are in the process of meeting that need, and we hope that, uh, a successful completion of those Canton Avenue, uh, homes, one of which is already sold, I'm told, will, uh, really do a lot to stimulate some additional new construction in our community. So with that said, uh, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.